All right, at 6:18, I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wasas School District. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so first on the agenda, we have Professional Learning Academy Graduation Recognition.
Shall we go over here? We have a little space. Let's go do that where we have a little bit of room. So if Kelly and Reggie get out of here.
Well, so Kelly has a number of academies. Kelly is an art teacher at Riverview and has completed the Digital Learning Highly Qualified Teacher Academy, the Culturally Responsive Highly Qualified Teacher Academy, the Differentiation Highly Qualified Teacher Academy, and the Classroom Management and Climate Highly Qualified Teacher Academy.
Congratulations.
And then we also have Reggie Smith, who has completed the Leadership via Teaching Academy.
Absolutely.
Anything you want to add about these at all? I'd put you on the spot.
No.
Great, thanks, everybody. Congratulations.
I'll come over in this second.
And I want one more. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, we have two individuals for public comment tonight. Just as a reminder that I will call you to come forward and please provide your name, address, and the topic to be addressed. Comments shall be limited to no more than five minutes, and Cassie will hold up timers to let you know how much time you have left. Speakers shall direct all comments to the board, not to staff or other participants. Public comments identifying specific personnel or students by name are not appropriate subjects for presentation to the school board and should be referred to the superintendent's office. Keep in mind that speakers bear the personal risk if he or she says anything during public comment period that's defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. And keep in mind that the board won't refer or won't engage in discussion with the comments. If it is an item that is on the agenda tonight, then we will have a discussion at that time. Okay, so first up, we have Tom McCormick.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Tom McCormick. I live at 1015 Broadway in Wasas. And I'm here, I believe, on the closed comment or closed session party. You're going to be dealing with compensation. So I would like to try and address that a little bit from the educator side of the aisle, if you would. I'm here to appeal to the board to consider increasing the offer to the education, the teachers of the school district. Couple of reasons why. Number one, our insurance costs have increased this year, as you're very well aware. You spoke to that in April and passed that, made that decision in April. The comparable amounts, without getting into a lot of details, when you look at last year's total budgeted money that we've seen in the total budget money that has been given to us for this year, is a little bit lower, and we feel like what we have asked for is fairly reasonable. We know our most valuable asset is our children in this school district. We believe, as educators in the classroom, we are the ones dealing with our most valuable asset, and it seems to be time. It's been a long time since, especially veteran educators, have seen an increase in pay that's at the consumer price index. For example, and pardon me, I'm going to lose my spot. We have, I don't have a number, but a significant number of educators who are stuck in our compensation model on the bottom of tier three, who are unable to move to that tier or choose not to move to that fourth tier. Some of it is professional choice, I realize. Some of it is because of their, where they are in their teaching career. And I want to tie this a little bit into something that happened about eight years ago. That was at one point in time, up until 2011, we had longevity pay after the 14th year and 19th year of an educator's career. And those things were removed back in 2011. And so the only increase, some of these stuck teachers, if you will, without getting into details, is the actual per cell increase. So we saw an increase in insurance, and I'm going to tell you, it's between $500 and $600 per person. I could be wrong on that number, but I'm in the neighborhood. At the present offer, most of those insurance costs are basically what that veteran educator would see. Now, if you're a veteran educator that was, say, in their 13th year, when those, eight years ago, when those long-term, pardon me, the longevity pay went into effect, you've never seen that longevity pay. Those were built-in promises for educators prior to that, that because you were probably at the bottom of the model, you could see that 4% increase or 6% increase depending on where you were at. Those are pretty valuable educators. They bring a lot of leadership to our school district, whether it's in a defined position such as at the high school level where I'm at, as a department chair, for example, or at our school, an IB coordinator. But within a department, especially at the high schools, where, let's say, there's eight or 10 members, and they're a veteran educator like myself, who's not in that position, but is still expected to lead some of our young teachers, because the knowledge and the lore that veteran educators bring is part of passing that on to the future educators and future non-rookies or early educators. So I would like you to deeply think about increasing that offer for that. One of the things Mr. McKee, who is now president tonight, has said in the past is, part of a happy employee is a well-paid employee, or vice versa. If we pay them well, they're going to be happy. That should play into that morale of educators. And we believe that that is very true. Please consider this. I appreciate your service very, very much. It's a difficult position to be in. Please keep serving. We appreciate it. The kids of this community appreciate it. The families do. I know that. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Tom. Next is John Mothens.
Good evening. I'm John Mothens. I live at 803 Stuben Street. As you know, I've spoken many times in front of you all, and I thank you for indulging me again tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank the board and the folks involved, the opportunity to negotiate and meet and confer with us this past month. I think everybody did a great job at that meeting. I go up and down. Mr. Test, my friend, did a great job stating the numbers, the fiduciary realities of the school district. Dr. Hiltz did a very nice job leading the meeting, and the two board members, Grush and Martin, represented the public very well. And I want to state that regardless of the fact that if you have to go to impasse, there's no personal issues with me or any of you, and I'll be willing to talk to any of you in the future, but as a president of the WEA, I represent through recertification 700 members of the Wasas School District. To that end, Tom McCormick did a great job with salary numbers on our end as well. It was a very interesting two meetings, some lively discussions that occurred, and I think we all ended on a good note. We all shook hands, and the realities are the realities. And if it comes to impasse, it comes to impasse, but there are some things that we would like you to think about. And there's really two numbers that I would like to hit on. One is 2.44, which is CPI this year, or this past year, and then the other one is 1.296. And I know there's all kinds of other numbers that will be shared with you, probably in closed session, but those are the two numbers that I will honestly share with my people. And then there's also the 2.48. The 2.44 CPI, the 2.48 total package, and then the 1.296, which is the per cell increase. Averages come out differently. We all can make numbers work differently, and we know that people will get more than 1.296 based on the hours that they put in for, lack of a better term, leveraging the model. And unfortunately, people don't consider that, thank you, Cassie, people don't consider that number a raise. They consider the 1.296 the actual number that is the raise. Only 50% of our teachers play the academy game, if you will, okay, is the number that we've been shared. So 50% of our teachers are getting approximately 1.296, maybe a little bit more if they credential. I don't have that number exactly. Some of us are against the wall. We don't even get to credential. We have to do the hours, but we don't get to credential anyhow. 1.296 is the number that teachers are getting on the cell, okay? And like I said, I know that numbers can be made a different way, in different ways, okay? But the rank and file asked me questions. They said, John, did you remind them of the insurance increase? And I did. I honestly did. And I said, yes, but I said, everybody needs to remember. If the insurance didn't change, the increase would have been exorbitantly more. And they have to understand that, and I was honest with them. And I said, that is not the fault of any of us. That is the industry's issue. That is not your fault, and that is not our fault. That is the industry's issue. I was honest with them. They asked about the new model that we've heard about. I was honest with them. I told them, we've been asked to be patient. Unfortunately, as I said in negotiations, patience is out. Patience is done. People are done. Patience is over. Okay? They asked, well, does the board, is the board concerned about morale? I said, I believe so. I said, we heard that in April, that they were concerned, thank you, they were concerned about morale, that there was, the liquidated damages was brought up, that was a morale issue. The moving back from tier four to tier three was a morale issue. At that time, it was stated that, you know, obviously, the insurance issue is going to be a morale issue. And they said, well, how does this play into it? And I said, I honestly can't tell you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Okay. We're at item four on the agenda, and this is the consent agenda. So I am seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Okay, on to agenda item five. This is old and recurring business, first from EdOps. This was the June 10th meeting, because we must not have had EdOps in July. But so on June 10th, 2019, we took action as a board by approving meal prices for the 2019-20 school year, establishing the adult meal price at $3.50. To remain in compliance with DPI and USDA standards, the adult meal price will need to be reestablished at $3.55. So I'm seeking a motion to establish $3.55 as the Nutrition Services Department adult meal price for the 2019-20-20 school year.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, next is from the PRL committee meeting from last month. We have requested changes to review.
Right. I think I'll just go here. So there's two documents. One, Mrs. Peck put together, I believe it's this one.
Next one.
Next one.
The overview.
There it is. You'll see the list of items the board wanted us to address, and you can see the status of those, most of them completed. So let's see, this one then? Or is this the?
Those are the policies.
Which ones am I looking? Oh, this is the, these are the ones in, right?
Yes, those are the ones the board.
So there are, you know, the changes are, you can see them here. We've had some conversation about this. I wonder if the board has questions or further suggestions at this time?
I think this is a good summary, just if we keep that going at each, you know, because I know we're going to do it all at once at the end, so just to keep this, keep building on this throughout the whole process, I think is going to work good.
Okay. So moving forward on these, we were going to then put, stop touching. We were going to put these into, if the board's good with it, we'll put it in the bylaws then for, yeah, final approval, you know, in October, as soon as we can get to it. Is that still agreeable?
Yes.
All right. So anything on this?
I don't have anything.
Thank you.
I'm just wondering, we're talking about all these, all these policies, like the board member ethics section and?
Right. So the last time we spoke about these, Cassie recorded all of the board's suggestions, and we think, we think this is what the board was asking for. So that's what we're kind of wondering. Is this where the, is this what you, does this meet your expectations?
As far as the board ethics, that is actually pulled from our current policy, because it's actually much more developed than what Neola has, and it appears that the board at that time put a lot of effort into that, just to respect that past work.
Well, I was there when we put the, on the bottom page 31, the volunteering description, and I think maybe we should discuss that again, because I think it seems odd to me that, on one hand, back when we were discussing the voting and how we were going to just trust people to do, to not abuse the privilege, but then we say, we don't trust you to volunteer and be objective. I just think we're missing out on being able to volunteer, and the schools can always use our help.
Don't you think it has more to do with, though, how the people that you're volunteering with and how the people working at the schools feel? Not so much on the ethics of us, but you don't always know what kind of impression you create. You may be creating some kind of stress without realizing it.
No, I mean.
From your perspective. I think that's the reason for the volunteering policy, don't you?
No, the reason, at the time that it was discussed, was if you volunteer, say, one of the things I always did, was I volunteered in the libraries, that would be your pet thing, and then when it came up for a vote, you would vote for whatever was going to help you. And frankly, we all have our loves, like I don't curl anymore, but that's my sport that I love, but I know that I can't go and ask above and beyond what is reasonable for it. And it's just something I know. And I know sometimes it causes stress when you're in the building, but I would hope you would be perceptive enough that if you did a long-term volunteering job, that you could pick out that the people really didn't want you there.
Well, it's not only that. I think if that is the concern, it's just because we're not in the schools now doing it. So it would seem strange at first, but you can learn so much, and it is part of being approachable and visible. And also, if you have the time to do it, and schools can benefit from a volunteer. I mean, I have personally always enjoyed volunteering, you know, just as a mother, and, you know, it was kind of sad to not be able to do that anymore. I just, even if it was just one hour a week going in the classroom. Sometimes I wasn't even working with my child, but I was just in the hallway, you know, reading. But still, it's just nice to learn, you know, meet some of our students and interact with them.
I think if we were to look at it again, we would want to have a meeting where we brought back the legal opinion that the board received, which caused the board to adopt that policy bill, as opposed to just doing it off the cuff today.
And I know when I joined the board, I was very disappointed that I couldn't volunteer anymore. And a board member at the time said, well, if you love volunteering so much, go to the Boys and Girls Club. Well, that's not what I want to do. And then it came to the thing that you could volunteer four times a year. Well, you know, consistency is really important. And now that we have a new policy where we only have one school, I mean, there's one liaison to each school, every year you're going to rotate, but if you're going to be an effective volunteer, you have to be a consistent volunteer. And already, I've been approached by a teacher who said, we could really use you at peer. Could you come and volunteer? And I said, well, I'm really sorry, I'm only allowed to come four times a year, and that's not very consistent. So, and my other argument at the time was, when I went to the school board, a new school board orientation meeting, Marathon Schools, their board members serve as workers in the office, they coach teams, and then here I am, sitting in the Wasas School District, being told, no, you're not allowed to do that because of a legal opinion. So that was very conflicting to me, and that's really always been disappointing, that I couldn't volunteer.
And there is that exception carved out, where school board members can coach, not be paid for it, but they can coach. It's kind of bizarre, and I had looked into that language on that, because I had previously taught G2. I'm at my son's school, with my background in French, and it was something fun to do, and I thought it was kind of similar to coaching, and I had actually debated about bringing it to the board as far as, you know, is that some, I think it's similar, working after school, not being paid for it, but it certainly seems like something that could have further discussion. And, you know, Keith, remember when we met on this, there was a conflicting policy? And, because there was one that talked about volunteering, and then I highlighted, no, I know that this is a problem, because I know I had to stop my weekly volunteering.
Right. The, you know, I understand everything you're all saying, and I don't disagree. In the time, in the time that I've been, you know, working with school boards and the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, that's always been their, the position of the WASB. You know, and I think it was Lance, or, you know, who mentioned, you know, the unknown or unintended consequences of that kind of interaction. So the board can do whatever the board feels best, but clearly, there was some recommendations, and if the board wishes to revisit that, we could certainly do it.
I would like to hear from people in the schools, administrators or the Longfellow Administrative Team, as to what their opinion of this, not tonight necessarily, but if you brought it up at one of your meetings, then you could maybe bring back the feedback to us? Because that's kind of what we're missing, because if there's unintended pressure or some kind of power plate, maybe they're aware of that or have opinions about that.
We are. And I've shared some of that with specific board members, but we could do that if that's of interest.
It would be to me.
Well, I think, I just think it's worth, if we're going to look at it, that's not just a line that we just kind of glance over, that's a full discussion. So it's been years, so I want to bring back the legal opinion that we received that caused us to add this. We want to get that sort of feedback, like you just discussed. I think it's worth looking at, if people are interested in it, but we need to have all the information that the board had when they made that decision the first time.
You know, one of the things that you're talking about is being able to be in the schools and being approachable and things of that fashion. Even the question I had for you, in all of the schools I've been in, after I stopped coaching, I've been officiating in the schools, and seeing a principal or superintendent or a board member officiating is a different, a whole different picture that the students see and that parents see and things of that fashion. So I think it's worth looking at.
Yeah. Most importantly, we need to know the basics of that.
Sure. We can arrange that, absolutely.
Okay, is that it for that tonight? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, on to agenda item six, new business. So the first item is the proposed 2020 WASB resolutions.
Thanks, Cassie.
At the July PRL meeting, we brought forward a number of WASB resolutions, some that moved forward to this meeting, some that moved forward to tonight's PRL and are coming back later. But the two that moved forward to tonight are the lunch shaming and then the mascot resolution. So let's take those in the order that they are in on the agenda packet. The first one is the resolution prohibiting public identification of students with delinquent meal balances. So when we discussed this last month, it was omitting, or I'm sorry, replacing stigmatization with public identification. This is pending with the assembly, but we don't know that it will actually pass. Recall, I had talked about this with Representative Snyder, and through our conversation, he acknowledged that maybe it wouldn't. So we know that WASB is a lobbying body, and if it weren't to pass, then at least, if it makes it through the resolution committee, then WASB has this support in the future if needed. Are there any comments, questions, concerns on this with the new change? Okay, then I'm seeking a motion to approve the resolution in support of legislation prohibiting public identification of students with delinquent meal balances for submission for the 2020 WASB convention.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, the next resolution is the Native American mascot resolution. So I have a little bit of an update. Now, you recall at the PRL meeting last month, we did have three public speakers that came in support of this resolution. And one of the things that had been addressed was perhaps seeking cosponsorship, because certainly, the Wasa Board of Education could submit this on its own, but since I, since we did have that conversation, I did reach out to a few different districts. Just as a reminder, this did pass unanimously with the full board in the PRL meeting in July. So I did reach out to a number of districts, including Madison Metropolitan, Sun Prairie. They both passed the resolution to co-sponsor with us on the same day. And Madison, I reached out to, it just seemed to kind of make sense. Sun Prairie, I reached out to, because you might recall the information about the community liaison and school board liaison, and quite frankly, I don't know a lot of school board members throughout the state, but I made that connection, so I thought, well, we'll see. And they were supportive of it. They passed the resolution, or they passed to co-sponsor. So Sun Prairie is going to co-sponsor, Madison is going to co-sponsor. Milwaukee Public Schools has it on their agenda this week. Shorewood School District has it on their agenda this week. Appleton School District has it on their agenda later this month. Prescott High School has it on their agenda later this month. Prescott is very, very, very supportive. They've done a lot of work in this area. Eau Claire has it on their agenda, but I did speak with the president, and with some of the comments they had, I said, another way to show support was to draft their own resolution on the topic. I think that would probably make the most sense in that instance. And a few districts had demonstrated interest, but then I'm not really sure if they're putting it on their agendas. So I think that there's going to be a number of districts that ultimately co-sponsor. I did speak at. I did speak at public comment at the Sun Prairie and the Madison Metropolitan. Because even though I had reached out to them by email, I do think if you're asking something of someone, it is always a good practice to go there in person to the extent possible. So it was, that was quite a day. All right, are there any comments, questions, concerns, changes on this resolution? We did discuss it in much greater detail in July.
And, and what will happen is if other districts submit these, that they will be combined. And what often happens is the committee looks at them and they pick the best one, and they put that forward.
Okay.
Are they passing it as is?
Yes.
So they're not making changes?
No.
So far, nobody's made changes?
Nobody's made changes. Eau Claire had suggestions, which I think, and I'll just, what was mentioned to me was references to First Amendment and references to equal opportunity that they wanted to see included. And I don't think that's appropriate. So I, I am happy for their support, but I politely said it isn't a way to perhaps draft their own. And I also told them that we already have done this through our PRL meeting with the language as is. So to go back and have those conversations. But those are two concepts that I don't really.
And it would be good for me to know those, because I'm sure that will come up at this committee.
Well, thank you for your work in seeking cosponsors. Thanks, Susan.
It was, thank you. It was a little bit exhausting. I don't think I could be a lobbyist. So thank you for that. So I'm seeking a motion to approve the resolution recommending legislation requires school districts retire Native American mascots for submission to the 2020 WASB convention. All in favor? Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is policy 5610, the High School Activities Code. Now, we'll have to pull that. This is what we, we are not prepared to do this tonight.
Right.
It's done. Okay, so, okay, so agenda item number seven. Committee updates board referrals. Are there any committee updates or board referrals tonight?
I just forgot to put in that I went to the Mon festival.
I don't, I don't think we're at that yet. That's going to be next.
Okay.
That's okay. All right, doesn't sound like it. Okay. On to open forum, Board Member Professional Growth and Development Report. Do any members of the board have any professional growth and development for the month that you'd like to address?
That's mine.
Yep.
I went to the Mon Festival, and I thought it was wonderful. I think it's better every year.
I went to the Equity Symposium in Appleton. And I know, I've talked with Keith a bit about the larger one that you guys all attended. I was particularly impressed with the identification of individuals and their needs and the focus on a couple of programs that were very outstanding. One of them was a discipline one that CISA, I think CISA II and CISA VI are now implementing. That, that apparently has had very, very good reviews, and WASB is really supporting it. The second one was that a program that identifies individuals that could be excelling in the AP and IB programs and helping facilitate them and move through some of the barriers that were otherwise getting in the way. With the understanding that they've had excellent, excellent results. And there's a lot of, they have a lot of funding already available through various, various groups, which would pick up a large portion of the cost. So that was, that was, it was a worthwhile event. A lot of it was geared to, to the inequality with black students. And so there was a lot of focus in areas that probably don't relate as much to us as they do with some of the others.
And then I just had a couple of things to add from the annual CISA IX meeting last week. One of the, they, they have this little brochure that they put out. And it was interesting to note that in 2017, 18, they had 4,958 participants in their different workshops. And this last year, they had 7,115, which is a huge jump. And so they want you to know that they're really sensitive to all the district's needs and what they're asking for them to do. And that they realize that so many school districts can't afford so many things that are really important. And so that, that was really a really interesting thing. The other thing is, I think Dr. Hiltz is familiar with Studer. Did I say that right? All right, well, their, CISA IX is joining two other school districts. And they're teaming up with this man named Tim Kite. And he's out of Ohio. And he piggybacks with Studer. And it's about developing a good culture in your school district. And it has to do with three letters. An event, your reaction to the event predicts what the outcome is going to be. And that this year, that's going to be their concentration of developing leaders on this concept and helping develop a better culture in your school. So throughout the year, I'm sure Dr. Hiltz is also going to be adding to, they're going to be really working on that and changing things that are happening in your school with this E plus R equals O. So it was an interesting evening, and it's nice to know that our CISA is really involved and working hard to provide services of what we're asking for. So that was what I did last week.
I'm just going to add a little bit within what Jane stated, going to the celebration. I was there and very well, I had to make a comment about the fact that it's very well-run, very organized. And the leaders, I had spoken to a couple of elders and talked about the fact that I wanted to congratulate them on a wonderful cultural appreciation with all the music, with the dancing, along with all of the sports programs that they had. But I think the cultural aspect, if we could do more with culture and bringing that opportunity to our district because of the fact that it's beneficial to all students to understand other cultures. I think that'd be a great opportunity. So piggyback off of that, it was very well-done.
I wanted to mention that I participated in the State Treasures Student Debt Roundtable as a participant because I still have some student debt. And I was a little embarrassed about that. But when I started to hear the stories of the 11 other people on that roundtable, there was a 71-year-old woman who had over $100,000 worth of student debt. There were people who had been scammed by companies that said that they could lower the interest rate on their student debt and really just stole their money. I started to get a real feeling for what a huge problem this is for so many people in the state of Wisconsin. And I connected with a woman whose name is Cheryl Rap. She's the college affordability specialist. And I pass this card down to Keith, so he has her information. I talked with some parents afterwards who were at that roundtable, just watching. And I felt like, one of the things I took away from that is that we could do a better job of talking to students about student debt before they go to college. And I know we do a lot with careers. And I know we do a lot with helping parents fill out FAFSA's and all of that stuff. And I'm not sure exactly what we talk to students about concerning student loan debt. But maybe as part of the personal finance class, maybe as a separate thing. I got the fair feeling, at least from this parent, that they didn't feel well-informed about that stuff. Now, whether we're doing the programs and the word just isn't getting out there, I don't know. But that might be a great goal for somebody because it really is affecting citizens in Wisconsin and many of our families. So, and even me, I'll be done paying off my debt soon, but I was really, some of these stories of people and their experiences were just heartbreaking. And doing something as simple as a state as letting people refinance that debt the way you would a home mortgage would be so beneficial to so many. So that's the thing I did that had a huge impact, and I'm still thinking of it now.
Well, yeah, and actually, just on that, Beth, I mean, I think it's another huge support for taking and taking seriously AP and IB classes because of earning those college credits. I know it made a world of difference for me, being able to do that and then have sophomores standing in my freshman year and just saving money that way. So thank you for doing that.
And you have partnership programs and everything else.
Dual credit, right, dual credit options.
Yeah.
I'm sure everybody knows that we have opportunities.
So, oh, go ahead, please.
I also had the opportunity to go to the Marathon County Education Committee. And it was a really interesting experience. Some very, very positive statements from the university extension people about the cooperation with the Wausau District this summer. And there was a really exciting presentation, and I gave you a copy of the Marathon County Literacy Council flyer. They are asking for some additional funds from the county. But in the, in the course of their presentation, they outlined that they've been working somewhat with the D.C. Everest School District and, and working with it, identifying, doing some tutoring. They might be willing in a, in a position to help out parents that, around literacy and around job, possibly finding jobs, they've been working with regards to some students. And I thought it was, it was a really interesting presentation and certainly one worth exploring. So it was a good, it was a good experience. Thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Well, thanks, everybody. That was a lot of variety in development and growth and sharing that with us. I'll just share mine very briefly. I did share the PowerPoint with the board, but I had been asked earlier this year by Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction to present at the American Indian Studies Summer Institute. It was held this year in Black River Falls. They know that I'm Ho-Chunk, and it was being held in conjunction with Ho-Chunk. So the topic was treaties and tribal sovereignty. And then really showing what that meant at Ho-Chunk. For us, for us Ho-Chunk Nation in Black River Falls, what tribal sovereignty looks like. Because that looks different than Crandon or, you know, other parts of the state. And then specifically, what does tribal sovereignty look like through my role as Supreme Court Justice? So I shared that PowerPoint with everybody because the intended audience had been board members, administrators, teachers. It was very exciting for me to be in a room with people that were very interested in that topic and that wanted to be there and learn about it. And so I appreciate anybody that did want to read it, you know, I just, I did hear back from a few, so thank you. It actually was the same day that I went to Sun Prairie School District Meeting and Madison. So I went from Wausau to Black River Falls to give the presentation to Sun Prairie to speak at their board meeting, to Madison to speak at their board meeting, back home to Wausau. And I actually saw a Madison board member during my presentation, and then she made it back for her board meeting, too. So that was an interesting day. All right, all right, thank you, everybody. On to superintendent commentary, Dr. Hiltz.
Sure. So I'll just, I'll start by following up on Lee's comment. Many of the administrative team attended a three-day equity conference in, in Madison. As Lee mentioned, it's about removing barriers, you know, closing achievement gaps. It's, it's, it's a very dense information, requires a lot of systematic, systems kind of thinking. So we're going to do some learning as an administrative team first. Then we'd be coming back to you to talk about how that might be implemented. Kind of on a continuous improvement model over, over an extended period of time. It's, it's very, it's critical work. It'll ruffle some feathers. So, but, so we're going to do some learning ourselves first. But I agree with you, Lee, it's really, it is, it is the work that, that needs to be done for the benefit of kids. Secondly, just want to give you a heads-up at the next committee meeting. Mr. Tess and I will be bringing the first official draft of the, of the new teacher compensation model. We've been working with it many, many meetings. We've gotten some, some systematic input, input from teachers. We're pretty excited about it, a little bit scared about it, so we'll be bringing that to you, just a little forecast there. There was a third item, and Cassie's not able to help me.
Short circle reports.
No, but good guys. Must not have been that important. I'll send it to you in email. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hiltz. All right, on to presiding officer commentary. First, I'm just going to ask that the board member liaison district activity report be entered into the official record. Second, I had asked Cassie to print out for everybody the, let's see, where is it? It's the open house, yes, thank you. It's the open house hours. So last year, I tried to make it to all my liaison schools to wish them a happy school year and just pop in and say hi. Don't want to take a lot of time there, the principals and teachers are busy. But I personally felt that it was an opportunity to just wish them a good start to the new school year. I have to admit, trying to do five schools plus my son's own school was not possible. I only got four plus my son's. But now, if anybody is interested, we all just have two school assignments. So if you're in, a couple of you have three, thank you. But if you are interested in popping into the school and wishing them a happy school year, there is the schedule for you. Okay, next item, I hope everybody got a chance to see this. So I got this, I received this in the mail regarding the WASB Region Five. So the WASB Board of Directors, we are located in Region Five. And there is an open seat, or it will be, come January 2020. So hopefully, you've looked at the information on it as far as all the different districts that are comprised in this Region Five. Because that means somebody from that district might be nominated for this seat. And we certainly can do that in Wausau. We can only nominate one person. They would, we would have to fill out a biography and qualifications of the nominee. The time commitment, I called down to WASB to just get a sense of how much time that is, since that's an important determining factor as well. And that is listed in here as well. It's the quarterly meetings, and they're pretty long. They are on a Friday night, 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., then the next day, Saturday, 8:00 to 3:00. And then you've probably read that they pay for the mileage, hotel room for Friday night, meals through that time. So there's four of those. Then there's the legislative advocacy meeting. That's usually kind of center in the state. They, that's in Stevens Point last year. That could change, though that's not usually a set location. And that's a Friday night board meeting. Then the board attends the legislative advocacy meeting the next day. And then there's at the annual meeting in January, and that's in Milwaukee. It is a three-year term. So if somebody isn't going to run for their seat again, or if they do not prevail in a reelection, then they would also lose that seat. And then there would have to be a interim election within the Region Five to replace that. And then that we can only have one board member voting at the October 24th meeting that's in Rothschild. So I guess the question is whether anybody's interested. I think it would be nice to have a Wausau person, but of course, this is just a nomination. There certainly would be no guarantee. So I think probably a lot of people would be voting based on the submitted biography of an individual.
And Cheryl Pluckelman, who is our current director, is running again. And it's, it's pretty difficult to beat an incumbent because they know the ropes. They've been active, usually long-term for board members. They're known now throughout the region, and people are generally going to vote for that person. So it's really hard to get elected if you're going to run cold against somebody who holds the seat. Not that, I mean, I contacted her because I thought if she wasn't going to run, I would run. But she's running, and I don't want to waste my time.
It's not really a whole lot of time, though. I think it's just a nomination form. I would encourage somebody that still would be interested to run against an incumbent. Why not? Is there any other interest?
I'll think about it.
Well.
I think there's a period of time here.
I think there's a period of time here, about a week, the 28th, applications have to be in.
A nomination for this election must be postmarked by September 9th.
September 9th, okay.
Okay, I would potentially have interest also, but I'm not going to appoint myself. So if somebody else does have interest, I, I would encourage it just because why not? And even if it's running against an incumbent, I think it'd be nice to have a Wassa voice on that board. But I'm not really sure how to proceed then. I don't think it, I don't know that it needs to be voted on essentially, but does it have to happen in a meeting? Because if Jim wants to think about it, can we put it on the agenda?
For next?
Yeah, okay. Maybe if anybody else wants to think about it as well. Okay, thank you. And then the last thing, it's a lot more people in this meeting than in July. So I guess we're getting close to that time of year. The next time we have a regular board meeting, we'll actually be back into the school year. So I just want to, on behalf of the board, wish everybody an awesome rest of your summer. I'm sure you're already back in the classrooms, back in the offices, prepping everything. If you haven't been there all summer long, that is. And just enjoy that and have a great first day of school.
And before you adjourn then, if we have two of our new elementary principals in the audience tonight.
Oh, wonderful.
So I thought, Andrea, could you put them on the spot?
It's my pleasure to introduce to the Board of Education our two new elementary principals who are joining us this year. Ms. Lizette Marzak will be the incoming principal at Hopperman Hills.
Hello.
Thank you.
Hi.
And Helleen Bergkamp will be the incoming principal at Grant Elementary School. Wonderful, welcome.
Welcome.
All right, with that, I'm seeking a motion to adjourn. Second? Oh, okay, it's a whole new meeting, so yeah.
Yeah.
It's a whole new meeting, so, right, okay. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.